We're at this meeting in the Raleigh City Council. The first item on our agenda was a certificate of appointment for Tom McCormick. I haven't seen him yet. Is he here? Okay. We'll hold. We'll go ahead and start the meeting and we'll give him a little while and see if he comes. Okay, we have one addition to the agenda that was left off for citizens that have signed up to speak. And I'm gonna go ahead and call up Brenda E. Weeks. Is Brenda Weeks here?
Yes ma'am.
Oh, okay. Just before we start, I want to remind everyone that you have three minutes to make your comments. Please start by giving your name and address to the clerk. And please be respectful of the time so everyone has the same amount of time to speak.
Yes ma'am. My name is Brenda Weeks. My address is 1400 Ravenhurst Drive, Raleigh. And I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, and the members of the council for allowing me to speak tonight. My topic is the deforestation, as I call it, of the, in the city of Oaks. I've noticed this in my neighborhood. But the reason I'm here, the reason I became so aware of this in my neighborhood was because of recent travels I've done this year. In the spring, I was in, well, I've been to two land masses very close to the poles. I was in Chile and Argentina in the spring, and then in the summer, I was in Alaska. In both places, there have been devastating effects because of greenhouse gases, basically. And in Alaska, in our own country, the largest natural temperate rainforest in the world, the Tongass National Forest, is dying. So, to start with, the research that I've done here, very briefly, you can see that there are approximately, well, 846 in fiscal year FY19, single-family dwelling permits. There were also 3,142 for additions. So, that's a lot of building that's going on. I'm not gonna read this presentation, I just want to highlight some points. I just want to urge you to think about what can be done for affordable housing and to preserve our trees and our canopy in particular. So, right now, according to my research, the residential, the single-family dwelling permit, there's no site visit prior to the footing inspection. So, I wanted to suggest that maybe if you guys could work together and put a plan together, a tree protection plan with standards, and come up with a list of species of concern and protect those, and protect those trees as much as possible. I went to Pine Hill Shores to look at as a model. They have a very stringent requirement there, but it's, you know, it's a maritime national forest. So, these are some of the areas you can see that have been cleared. This is just within a three-block radius of my home. And you can see, there's one, you know, there's a subdivision of two lots made into three, a subdivision of one lot made into two, and then a single-family dwelling, no trees.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just, I would like to say that we have asked our forestry staff and our planning department to work together to see what can be done to incentivize developers to save more trees, because we are not allowed by state law to do much, to regulate that on sites that are smaller than two acres, but, which is most of the infill development that you're talking about. So, we're trying to look at how we can incentivize developers to save more of the trees.
Well, I had an idea that you could, you could-
All right, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you. We have a lot of people tonight, so I'm gonna have to ask you to stay at the time limit, but maybe you all can follow up and talk about that some more.
Yeah, if you'd like to get in touch with me, I'd be happy to follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Michelle Bandley, Bandclader. Was that close? Okay.
Hello, for those of you I haven't met, I'm Michelle Bandclader. I'm at 613 Elm Street. I've had the pleasure of working with most of you through my previous work with the city of Raleigh, but I'm coming tonight. As just a concerned citizen, I'm part of a grassroots animal advocacy group here in the Triangle. We have quite a large crowd around us tonight, and we are great hotspots of people from different rescues, different animal advocacy groups, different nonprofits. It's a really diverse crowd, and we're all brought here with the same mission of trying to improve the lives of animals here in Raleigh. Tonight specifically, we want to talk about the sheltering ordinances that Raleigh has. Currently, it's three walls, a roof, and access to clean water is all you need to have a dog here in Raleigh. And unfortunately, that's not really cutting it anymore with the extreme temperatures that we're seeing. We've had dogs die both of extreme cold and extreme heat in the last year, just because our seasons are getting more and more extreme. We're finishing the hottest summer we've ever had. So, we specifically want the city to consider a new ordinance around extreme temperatures so that our animals are kept safe. I've worked for the city. I do not want to create any more work for the city, and I definitely don't want any more dogs to end up in our shelters because of this. So, we really want to work together with the city to create a better system and empower dog owners to be better dog owners. So, we've done a ton of research. Specifically in Pennsylvania, they passed a law that has new sheltering ordinances if it's above 90 degrees and below 32 degrees. We recognize that's probably not feasible here in Raleigh where it hits above 90 degrees just about every single day during the summer, but we'd like to work with city staff to see what feasible options there are and what a happy medium would be where we're keeping our residents happy and our dogs safe. We've already spoken to animal control officers, and we've spoken with staff at Wake County Shelter, and they're on board, but they definitely agree that it needs to be a public-private partnership with concerned citizens and city staff. And we definitely, we want to empower citizens. We want citizens to keep their dogs. We don't want to be fining people, and we don't want to be taking away their dogs. We just want to help them to become better dog owners and more educated that dogs need better sheltering conditions during extreme temperatures. So, our specific ask, I'm very cognizant of time right now, our ask from council is that you guys consider asking the city to specifically instate some kind of ordinance. And one step further, we'd like to be part of that conversation. We'd like to be at the table with the city. We don't want to give them any more work. We want to work with them to find out how we can get this ordinance moving forward. I did it with 30 seconds to spare.
That's good, that's good. Thank you. I'd just like to ask staff, maybe if you can send us a report so we understand exactly what our current ordinance is, that'd be helpful, then we can-
We can certainly do that. I'd like to ask, we include the city attorney's office in terms of the ordinance, so we'll be happy to get your report.
Okay. We'll take a look at it. Thank you. Okay, next we have Kenneth Haywood.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to be before you tonight. My name is Kenneth Haywood. I'm with the law firm of Howard Stallings, 5410 Trinity Road here in Raleigh. I am here tonight on behalf of one of our clients, the Wake County School System, to start the process for a text amendment, specifically with regards to our request tonight. We are requesting a text change in UDO Section 2.2.5, which is the ordinance that deals with the principal building height for civic buildings within residential zoned districts. Currently, the way that the ordinance is read, you are limited for civic buildings to three stories or 40 feet in principal height. The school system has recently had encountered some challenges, specifically recently with the West Millbrook Middle School, in meeting the height requirement. The three stories is not an issue that I wish to talk about in terms of changing, but regarding the principal height, that is what we would like to have council authorize and the staff then pursue an ordinance change. Before coming here tonight, just for your information, I have spoken with staff, I've talked to the people in the planning department about this. We've not received any objection to looking at a text change in terms of increasing the height. The city manager received a report, which you have, from planning, in terms of another text change that has gone through the growth committee recently, and some different ideas in terms of how perhaps this is attached to that or a standalone amendment. But our specific request tonight, as I've said, is to have council authorize a text change to this particular UDO section to increase the principal height for civic buildings under this UDO section, and we will be looking forward to working with staff and planning commission and you in terms of finalizing that in any way we can. Glad to answer any questions if necessary.
I have a question.
Ms. Crowder and then Mr. Cox.
So, Mayor, I think we had something about this recently in growth of natural resources in terms of looking at some height standards. I wonder if this falls within the purview of what we, I think it was in September.
I think this is three stories, and you all looked at five, seven, and above. And these are the three stories that they're needing some extra feet on for civic uses. Mr. Cox?
Plus, we looked at mixed-use districts.
Right, not civic.
We didn't look at residential districts.
Or civic.
Right. And my question would be to look at two things. One, to look at the height in residential districts, but then also look at this from the perspective of, could this be solved through a rezoning, which would allow greater height, say, to a mixed-use district?
And often is, if I may respond, counselor, often, you know, schools are often in residential zoned districts. That's where, within the city of Raleigh, if you look historically at many of the schools that we have that are over 50 years that we've been trying to now renovate, either by replacing or just through renovation problem, issue, so we're already in a residential zoned district. Res zoning may, you know, it's certainly something we can talk about. It certainly would add additional complexities and timelines to the construction schedule. Here, really what's driving this is, a civic building is much different from a home in that within a civic building, your ceiling, floor-to-ceiling ratio is different. You've got between each floor additional space needed for utilities, HVAC, and other systems, which you wouldn't normally have in your principal home. So, because of that, the height of the buildings, when you're looking at the fact that it's measured from this average grade that's within the UDO, if you have a site like West Millbrook where the topography was very steep and you're looking at the average, it presents a great challenge. And so, we're simply looking to see if we can just change for civic buildings what the principal height would be to accommodate the very nature of what a civic building would be versus a residence.
But my concern is that not all civic buildings are created equal. And what a rezoning request would do would allow us to be able to look at conditions that could apply to a specific case and, to a specific rezoning. And that would allow us, I mean, maybe you need an additional height save just for an auditorium as opposed to classrooms, for example. It would allow us to take a more nuanced approach, and that's why I would request staff to consider both changing, a change to the height of civic buildings in general, but then also consider, you know, taking a rezoning approach as well.
And, I mean, certainly, I think all approaches can be, you know, explored with staff. The one thing that I'll mention to you is that if you have any knowledge in terms of the timelines for schools and trying to get schools open as quickly as possible, if you add to that timeline, you know, the lengthy process, for good reasons, in terms of rezoning within the city of Raleigh now, that adds a fairly significant larger timeline and somewhat uncertainty to the process of being able to get a new school online, if it's either one that's already there and you're now having a rezoned, or a brand-new school. So, I'll just offer that as an additional comment in terms of the amount of time that would be added to it, but we're certainly within staff can talk about all those things.
Madam Mayor.
Certainly happy to look at all those options.
So, I appreciate your concern about the timing involved in getting schools built. Also, I'm hearing the concern about, what you're really asking for is more height in a residential district. So, I think there's an opportunity for a conversation about, without going to a full-blown rezoning, what kind of other use limitations could be added if you wanted to go beyond a certain height limitation that's already in the code now. Obviously, it would be things like screening, buffering, setbacks, and those kind of things, but that could be part of just a use limitation as opposed to a full-blown rezoning.
Sure, understand.
So, Mayor.
I'd like to go after you.
Okay. So, Mayor, I do appreciate your time and wanting to get a school open. I think maybe, and we can go ahead and push this out so it can be part of what we do, but I think maybe taking it in growth of natural resources and looking at it from a text change amendment might be a good thing to do. We might be able to look at the nuances you're looking for and kind of carve out what we need to do and accomplish your goals, and also look at the single-family neighborhoods around it. So, my suggestion is that we move this to growth of natural resources.
Is that a motion?
Okay, well, there's no objection.
Yeah, I'd like to comment. So, you know, I think we have to really look at this carefully. Mr. Cox, I think brought up some good points that if we open this up too widely, then there'll be people that will be unhappy about having a three- or four-story or five-story school in their residential neighborhood. Primarily, elementary schools are never more than two stories tall.
That's correct.
So, I think we need to look at that versus, you know, when you purchase land, you could be thinking about rezoning at that time rather than when it's actually designed. So, I think there's got to be a happy medium here if we would consider this.
And we look forward to the opportunity to be able to present all of that in the committee structure and have that dialogue with you.
Okay, so if there's no objection, I'll take it in committee. Thank you.
Fine.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Calla Wright.
The clock hadn't started, I was waiting on that. But good evening, Mayor McFarland, Raleigh City Council. I'm Calla Wright, and I reside at 613 Cooper Road, Raleigh, and a longtime resident here in southeast Raleigh. I'm here to discuss the reused wastewater tower gentrification and the homeless here in Raleigh. As a citizen of southeast Raleigh, former Charles Meeker, Mayor Meeker, and the Raleigh City Council voted to place a reused wastewater tower, the only reused waste toilet water tower, on a cheap piece of land in a black neighborhood. The reused wastewater tower was placed there primarily so that the Raleigh Country Club white membership, privileged membership, its playground, golf course could remain green. The privately-owned golf course does not allow citizens from the surrounding areas, primarily the black and brown citizens, to attend or have access to membership because of the enormous fees. How many of you are members of the Raleigh Country Club? Yet, you have placed a reused wastewater tower on a cheap piece of land in a black neighborhood so that the white privileged citizens could have a playground. I come, have come before you on several occasions to ask for the removal, replacement information regarding my land erosion's lawn care that I have picked up because of the city's trees and debris that's fallen on my land for the well over 10 years. I'm here to get more details regarding Councilman Cox's request for a cost removal for the tower to be removed. Mr. Lynch said on yesterday that he was shocked to hear the request. I submitted a fax or form on June 6, 2019, to risk management regarding the costs or the issues that I have with the tree leaves that are falling on my land that I paid for to have removed, and the soil erosion. Do I have to be a white citizen in an upper-middle-class neighborhood to get a response for my concerns? You have no problem spending my taxpayer money. Gentrification has led to an increase of homeless students in the Wake County Public Schools. Last year, over 4,300 students were classified as homeless, and yet the number is expected to increase this year. How many of you can continue to promote or boast about Raleigh being a city of thriving and prosperous city for our citizens when we have so many homeless families, those who cannot afford to live here? And yet, we talk about Raleigh as being a prosperous and thriving city. As citizens and voters, we will take all of these issues in consideration on our upcoming election. Thank you so much, Cox, Councilman Cox, and thank you so much, Mr. Stevenson, and for your assistance. And, Mr. Branch, I'm looking for a resolution. I don't want to have to come back up here again, please, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Ken Cheeseman.
Ken Cheeseman, 107 November Street. Reason I'm here is to demand that the council stop sinning by omission, the sin of doing nothing to defend the murder of innocent lives in Raleigh. The council should immediately make Raleigh a sanctuary city for the preborn. Luke 19, 1 through 9. He, Jesus, entered Jericho and was passing through. And behold, there was a man named Zacchaeus. He was a chief tax collector and was rich, and he was seeing, seeking to see Jesus. But on account of the crowd, he could not, because he was small in stature. So, he ran ahead and climbed into a sycamore tree to see Him, and He was about to pass that way. And when Jesus came to the place, He looked up and said to him, "Zacchaeus, hurry down, for I must stay at your house today." So, Zacchaeus came down, and He received him joyfully. And when they saw it, they grumbled, and He asked, He asked the guest of the man, "Why, why the sinner?" And Zacchaeus said to the Lord, "Behold, Lord, half of my goods I give to the poor, and if I have defrauded any one of anything, I restore it fourfold." And Jesus said to him, "Today, salvation has come to this house, since also He is the Son of Abraham." Counsel, like Zacchaeus, He worked for a powerful pagan state, and you too work for a pagan state. Zacchaeus, He had a bit of power over people, and you too have some power over people. And Zacchaeus was small, and you too are small, small of heart, small of character, and using your power for evil. You might be thinking, "How are we doing evil?" Your sin, the sin of omission, is evil. James 4:17 says, "So whoever knows the right thing to do and fails to do it, for him it is sin." Romans 1 and 2 makes it clear that you know that killing innocent babies is murder, and you do nothing to stop it. God has given you power to rule, and you are commanded to use that power to establish justice in the land. Counsel, instead of justice in the land, you, your inaction is defiling the land with innocent blood. You are bringing judgment on the city that you swore with your hand on the Bible to uphold. Counsel, when Zacchaeus was in the tree, Jesus did not ask him to come down, He commanded him to come down. Counsel, come down, repent of your sins.
Thank you very much. Next we have Gavin Omealia.
My name is Gavin Omealia, 8013 Lakeshore Drive. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here today on behalf of the dozens of innocent babies who are being slaughtered every single day in our city. And there is no doubt that babies are living human beings. For one, they have a unique genetic code from the moment of conception. And two, we have the technology to see inside of a mother's womb. Just look at an ultrasound, it is obviously a baby. I'm here today to tell you that abortion is wrong, and that you, as the city council of Raleigh, are responsible for protecting the lives of these preborn neighbors. Abortion is wrong for one main reason, and that is because God says in the Ten Commandments, "You shall not murder." There are no qualifiers of age or location. He doesn't say you can murder someone if they're less developed than you. No, all murder is sin. Secondly, abortion is wrong because it is discrimination. I would like to take a moment to read you the policy of the city of Raleigh on discrimination. The policy of the city of Raleigh is and shall be to oppose any discrimination based on actual or perceived age, mental or physical disability, sex, religion, race, color. Abortion discriminates against the preborn on all of these. It discriminates against them because they're young, it discriminates them because they have disabilities, and it discriminates against them because they're African-American or black. Abortion for any reason at any stage of development is wrong. And you, as the city council, are responsible. James 4:17 says, "To him who knows the right thing to do and does not do it, to him it is sin." And you know today that the right thing to do is to make abortion illegal. And if you do not, you are sinning against the very God of the universe. And the Bible tells us that the penalty for sin is eternal separation from God and a lake of fire. Now, I'm not here to look down on you because you're sinners. As a matter of fact, we are all sinners, not only for the sin of allowing abortion, but for hatred, lying, lusting, and coveting. There is no one who is not a sinner. And if God is really just, then sin must have consequences, and the consequences for sin is death. But God sent Jesus Christ. Jesus lived the perfect life that we could not live, and He died the death that we deserved. And if you repent and believe in Him today, you may be saved by grace alone, through faith alone, in Jesus Christ alone. Please, I beg of you, end abortion today.
And next we have, yeah. Next we have Kevin Crease, excuse me. Okay, next we have, with Kevin Creasy.
Yeah, Kevin Creasy. I reside at 2129 Balboa Road. Thank you for allowing me to speak before the council. I consider this to be a great honor, and I pray for you every day. Tonight, I'm gonna explain the two ways people can live their life and what Jesus Christ thought of the little children, and how you can enter into a relationship with Him and have eternal life. Matthew 7:13 and 14. Enter by the narrow gate, for wide is the gate and broad is the way that leads to destruction, and many are there go by in it. Because narrow is the gate and difficult is the way that leads to life, and there are few who find it. This broadway is what most people choose. Society says that sexual relations outside of marriage is okay, and that's just natural instincts. So, abortion is used as a form of birth control by many. God has given us free will, but if we, there are consequences if we choose to ignore God's call to salvation. This broadway is described in Proverbs 14:12. There's a way in which seemeth right unto a man, but the end thereof are the ways of death. And this broadway is characterized by spiritual darkness, and it gets darker as one spends years on this dark path. The narrow way that leads to life, to spiritual life, is well-lit. In John 8:12, Jesus said, "I am the light of the world. Whoever follows Me will not walk in darkness, but will have the light of life." And He said in John 14:6, "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No man cometh unto the Father but by Me." This narrow way is well-lit, and it becomes brighter as the Christian proceeds on it. This is what awaits the Christian at the end of their life. Revelation 21- Revelation 21:4, "And God will wipe away every tear from their eye; there shall be no more death, nor sorrow, nor crying; there shall be no more pain, for the former things have passed away." This is what the following... This is what Jesus thought of the little children in Matthew 18:6, "But whosoever causes one of these little ones who believes in Me to sin, it would be better for a millstone to be hung around his neck and be drowned into the sea." And this is what Jesus said about offending a little child. Imagine what He would have said about actually murdering a baby. Here is the great news, though. In Matthew 12:31, Jesus said, "Therefore I say unto you, Every sin and blasphemy will be forgiven, men; but blasphemy against the Spirit will not be forgiven, men." This means that the only sin that Jesus will not forget is rejecting His call to salvation. If God is drawing you to salvation, if God is drawing you and you want to have your sins forgiven and have eternal life, admit that you are a sinner and repent. Change your mind from unbelief to belief. Believe that Jesus died on the cross and He rose again on a third day defeating sin and death, paying your sin debt in full. Confess Him as Lord and Savior, ask Him to save you. If you exercise genuine saving faith, you will be saved, and you will see that abortion is clearly its wrong. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have Kathy Firth. I'm sorry, Peter Firth. Peter Firth.
My name is Peter Firth. My address is 3640 Armida Drive, Wake Forest.
Peter, can you stop the time real quick? Sir, the people behind you cannot see because of that sign, so... Because there's some...
It's within regulation.
Okay.
Okay. Is it within...
I'm just making sure.
Stop. It's within regulation.
Y'all good? Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Firth.
Just wanted to check.
It's okay.
Go ahead. I stopped the time so it wouldn't take your time.
Thank you.
All right, you go ahead.
We come here tonight, as in nights past, to plead for the unborn children in the city who are now on death row. We see abortion... We will see abortion come to an end in this country, and we petition this council to begin by making Raleigh a sanctuary city for the unborn by making abortion illegal in Raleigh. We've been told that nothing can be done about this because it's legal for parents to kill their children. Politically, this represents the easy way out of having to make a hard decision. In the political flow of things, children are disposable. It's easy to go with the flow. All the evil needs to exist is for people who can act and do something fail to do so. The unborn child has no protection for rights, for life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, but they deserve the same rights as everybody else. They are created by God. American society is not so different from an earlier godless society. In ancient Rome, there existed a form of public entertainment called gladiator fights, where people would pay money to watch men kill other men. The cruel carnage was even increased as it pleased the masses to see Christians executed as common criminals. They watched as animals tore to pieces, men, women, and children. The vicious and cruel emperors of Rome delighted even more ways of executing Christian martyrs. The Emperor Nero introduced twilight executions, where Christians were nailed to a cross and burned alive as human torches. My point is this: God brought this madness to an end with its ultimate conclusion, the destruction of the empire. Our bloodthirsty lust for infant Holocaust is the modern-day bloodsport of the Colosseum. Our own American empire is witnessing a breakdown in respect for authority. Polarism of beliefs without any ultimate standard of right or wrong has left our country and even our world in a state of chaos. We all, like sheep, have gone astray. We reaffirm the inspiration of the Bible, in which it is demonized by a society that is hell-bent on rejecting God's ultimate authority. The carnage in the Colosseum has been replaced with murdered babies. People don't want to pay money to watch the bloody murders, that would affect their sensitivities, but we condone the slaughter of the innocent, unprotected human beings, and it must stop. Don't deceive yourself, abortion is not women's health care. All the comforting euphemisms cannot hide the fact that we are cruelly murdering approximately 3,000 children a day. The sensibilities are missing from our society that respect the value of human life, and the coldness of the human heart is in direct proportion to our rebellion against God. The Bible teaches us that love is the greatest value, but we have turned that wonderful Bible lesson into a grotesque caricature of love for blood and the shedding of another one's blood so that we can do what? Create a better society? We need to stop this madness and abortion now.
Thank you very much. Next, we have... Excuse me. Next, we have Kathy Firth. Is Kathy Firth here?
She's coming.
Okay.
Hey, Kathy.
My name is Kathy Firth, and I live at 3640 Armida Drive, Wake Forest. We are here again this month pleading with you to end abortion and to make Raleigh a sanctuary city for the unborn. Truth is hard. Let me share the reality of abortions occurring in our city daily. Chemical abortion, RU486, blocks progesterone, starving the baby of vital nutrients. Thirty-six to 48 hours later, my supraparietal is taken, which initiates uterine contractions, resulting in delivering a dead baby at home in the toilet. Surgical abortions, suction aspiration, vacuum cuterage, DNC, dilatation, and curatage three to 16 weeks. A powerful suction tube with a sharp cutting edge is inserted into the womb through the dilated cervix, dismembering the baby, tearing the placenta from the wall of the uterus, and vacuuming, sucking the baby into a collection jar. D and E dilatation and evacuation, 14 to 24 weeks. Dr. Tony Levitino, a former abortionist, describes a D and E on a 17-year-old. Quote, "Patient is 20 weeks pregnant. Her baby would be as long as your hand from the top of her head to the bottom of her rump, not counting the legs. First, remove the laminaria placed on the cervix to dilate it. Introduce the catheter and cervix. Turn on the suction machine, connected through clear plastic tubing to the catheter. What you see is a pale yellow fluid that looks like urine coming through the catheter into a glass bottle. This amniotic fluid surrounded the baby to protect her. Then look for your sofer clamp. It is about 13 inches long and made of stainless steel. At one end, her jaw is about 2 and 1/2 inches long and about 3/4 inches wide with rows of sharp ridges or teeth. This instrument is for grasping and crushing. Picture yourself reaching in with the sofer clamp and grasping anything you can. Once you have grasped something, squeeze on the clamp to set the jaws and pull hard, really hard. You feel something let go, and out pops a fully-formed leg, 4 to 5 inches long. Reach in and grasp whatever you can, set the jaw and pull really hard, and out pops an arm about the same length. Reach in again and again with that clamp and tear out the spine, intestines, heart, and lungs. The toughest part of a D and E abortion is extracting the baby's head. The head of a baby that age is about the size of a plum and is free-floating inside the uterine cavity. You can be pretty sure you have a hold of it if the sofer clamp is spread about as far as your fingers will allow. You will know you have it when you crush down on the clamp and you see a pure, white, gelatinous material issue from the cervix. That was the baby's brains. You can then extract the skull pieces. Horrifying. What kind of nation have we become?
Thank you very much.
Have mercy on our children.
Thank you. I'm going to ask... Excuse me. I'm going to ask everyone to please be respectful and allow us to give each person that signed up time to speak. Next person is Brian Braddy.
My name is Brian Braddy. I live at 1316 Traylon Rose Court, Wake Forest. Tonight, I wanted to speak again about the murder of the unborn children known as abortion that is ongoing in the City of Raleigh, that you, as a council, continue to ignore and allow. However, it does not surprise us or deter us from ringing you this message, for our God desires for all people to be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth. It doesn't surprise us because the Bible tells us who mankind is, and that you and your sinful nature bow down and worship the culture of death and not the God of the Bible. The Bible tells us none is righteous, no, not one. No one understands, no one seeks for God. All have turned aside together, they have become worthless. No one does good, not even one. This is a state of mankind, and has been demonstrated by you, because not only do you not fear God, but you are ignorant of His Word, laws, and judgments. You do not understand or seek Him. Why is this? In Ephesians 2, it tells us, "The unbelievers, you are dead in the trespasses and sin in which you still walk, following the course of the prince of the power of the air, who is Satan." It says you are dead to the things of God, you are acting ignorantly in unbelief. Therefore, you have remained idle, doing nothing, as your father Satan would have you do. For there are two types of people in this world, one who serve and do the will of God, and those who follow and serve the world and themselves. Yet there is good news, and we call it the gospel, is the message that God demonstrated His love to us, and that while we were still sinners, Christ died for us. For our sake, He made him to be sin, who knew no sin, so that in Him we might become the righteousness of God. He was pierced for our transgressions, He was crushed for our iniquities. This saying is trustworthy and deserving of full acceptance that Christ Jesus came into the world to save sinners, and that you being born with a sinful nature and no desires to seek God can be born again with a new heart, a new mind, and no longer be conformed to the things of this world if you repent and put your trust in Christ Jesus, our Lord. A famous Christian theologian named Augustine once said, "I believe so that I may understand." That unless you believe the gospel, you will not understand the things of God. You are blinded by your unbelief. You suppress truths that you know. You know that it is wrong to murder, but your allegiance is not to God, but to man who is wicked and whose heart cannot be trusted. Over the last several months, we have resented to you that abortion is not health care because even our opponents say that it should be legal but rare. But why would we want health care rare? That my body, my choice, is no different from my slave, my property of slave owners in the 1800s. My point tonight is that there are two kingdoms, the kingdom of light and the kingdom of darkness, the kingdom of God versus the kingdom of man, a spiritual battle for the souls of men. Don't be deceived in thinking that God is pleased with the killing of innocent children in the womb, and then believe you are doing good works that are pleasing to Him. Examine yourselves. This is the arrogance of man to believe that he can decide who lives and who dies. Cry out to God, show mercy to you, that He will show mercy to you. Pull back His wrath from away from your eyes before it is too late. Repent and believe. Seek and find your Savior and obey the commands of God. Make Raleigh a sanctuary city.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Haley Braddy.
Hello, my name is Haley Braddy. I live at 8528 Plymouth Hill Drive, Wake Forest. I would like to thank you for your time and for letting me speak today. I'm here today to beg once again for the lives of the unborn. I would like to tell you what God says about child sacrifice. In the Bible, in the Book of Jeremiah, God had taken the people of Israel out of Egypt and delivered their enemies into their hands, but they still chose to disobey by worshiping false gods and sacrificing their own children in them. Because God is a just and holy God, He had to punish the people of Israel for their sin. God sent a prophet named Jeremiah to Israel to warn them of what was coming, to warn them about God's holy burning anger against them. But they did not listen to Him, so God punished them by exiling them from their land. As you can see, God takes child sacrifice very seriously. He is love for the little children and for the weakest among us. This child sacrifice that happened years ago is still happening today, only it's through abortion. This is true. Abortion has told us... Abortion is the killing of innocent children. It is wrong, and we know that God hates it. He has told us not to murder. God, being holy and just, has to punish those who take part in this modern-day child sacrificing. I, like Jeremiah, am here today warning you of the wrath of God that burns against everyone who takes part in this. I'm warning you to put an end to this child killing. We need to stand up for what is right. We've been coming for seven months now, begging you to do what is right. We need to take action now so you will not have to face God for this sin against Him. But there is still hope. Jesus Christ, God's only Son, came down to earth, lived the perfect life we could not, and died the death we should have died. He paid for our sins when He died on the cross, and now we can have eternal life if we repent of our sins and trust in Him. Don't do what the Israelites did. Listen to this warning, repent of your sins now, and turn to Jesus Christ. Make your choice now because we are not guaranteed another second. I care for you, and I don't want you to have to face God's wrath. We don't know when the day of judgment will come, we only know it is coming. So choose Jesus now so you can be seen as righteous before God on the day of judgment. Help us end modern-day child sacrifice. Make Raleigh a sanctuary city for the unborn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Lucas.
The next one has withdrawn, Lucas.
Oh, okay, thank you. Then Zach Braddy.
Good, Zach. Good evening, City Council. My name is Zach Braddy. I live at 8528 Plymouth Hill Drive in Wake Forest. I've come here, like my friends, to beg for the lives of unborn children in our city. Deuteronomy 30:19 states the following, "I will call heaven and earth to witness against you today, that I have set before you life and death, blessing and curse. Therefore choose life, that you and your offspring may live." Counsel, I want you to know that I am pro-choice. I'm pro-choice when it comes to someone choosing what they will eat, where they will live, what they will wear, how they'll educate their children, or who they'll vote for. I'm also pro-choice for women. I'm pro-choice for them. I want them to have all kinds of choices that are afforded to them by God and our country and our city. I want women to have the choice not to conceive. If a woman doesn't want to conceive, she has the choice not to do so. If she becomes pregnant against her choice, she should be given another choice, the choice to keep her baby or to place her baby in a loving and adoptive home. And so I'm adamantly pro-choice. But choice has limits. Our rights to choose end where harm to another individual begins. This is true of every piece of legislation that is enacted. All laws will eventually restrict choice to some degree or another. Certainly, anyone of sane mind would agree that we, as a society, would want to restrict by threat of law the choice of the pedophile to molest little children, or the choice of the sex trafficker to choose to kidnap little girls and enslave them for financial gain. Would anyone here dare say that people who want to take away those particular choices are anti-choice? Of course not. It's obvious, when intelligently reflected upon, that some choices are not choices that should be made. While people have choices that are set before them every day, not all choices are equal. Some are good, some are bad, and a wise and discerning society will know the difference between the two. The pro-death crowd would have the society to believe that those who are opposed to abortion are anti-choice, but nothing could be further from the truth. As a follower of Christ, I want all people to have all kinds of choices that won't harm other individuals, and that includes the baby in the womb. What do you think the baby would choose if he or she were given the opportunity? Would they choose decapitation and disembowelment and dismemberment? Or would they choose birth and life? I think we know the answer to that. It turns out that those who claim to be pro-choice in all actuality end up being anti-choice. They don't want the baby to have a choice. The innocent babies being slaughtered, they're the real victims here. Their choice has been robbed from them by the pro-aborts. But the most important question is this: What would God have us to choose? He's the Creator and the giver of life. He's the King. He's the Lord. He's the One who has the right to say what we should or should not choose, and He commands that we choose life. God is deeply concerned for these children, and His Word makes clear that the taking of their lives is murder. Those who murder innocent children will find themselves on Judgment Day being cast into a lake of fire. But thankfully, like my friend said, He's a merciful God, sending His Son, Jesus Christ, to live the righteous life His people could not, to die the excruciating death on the cross that we deserve to die, and He's risen from the dead to give new life to those who believe in Him. What's your choice, City Council? Will you repent and turn to Christ? Will you choose life for these babies? Will you choose to make Raleigh a sanctuary city for the unborn?
Um, next, we have... Next, we have Kelsey McCain. Is Kelsey... I'm sorry, is Kelsey McCain here?
Uh, nothing, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, sorry.
Hi, my name is Kelsey McLean, and I'm a volunteer at a Women's Choice of Raleigh, located at 3305 Drake Circle here in Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the people that have not been mentioned, that is the patients of abortion care facilities here in the Raleigh, North Carolina area. I have direct experience, I have had direct experience since 2012 with several of the people in this room, and the abusive, harassing, and ultimately unhelpful presence that they bring to the clinic spaces. Just this past weekend, we had several of the protesters here in this room crowding our volunteers on a corner next to the easement, refusing to give them any space to move or breathe, screaming in their faces, throwing their signs in their faces. Two of the gentlemen behind me have engaged in personal attacks against escorts, one of which had to be escorted out of the building during a city council meeting because he was harassing me to the point that a law enforcement officer had to intervene. That is who is bringing you this message of peace and love today. That's who's behind us, that's who's snarking and making the, you know, ridiculous comments when I got up to speak. These people harass, intimidate, and terrorize our patients on a weekly basis. The reason I exist as a clinic escort is because of the abusive protests that go on in this city. We have had community members in the neighborhood where our clinic is located come and beg the protesters to quiet down, and they're met with even more hostility and more anger and more screaming. What we need in the City of Raleigh is not a sanctuary city for the unborn, we need a sanctuary city for people seeking abortion access. We need to protect the people that are seeking abortion care. They deserve to access those services without fearing for their lives and safety. It is all too common that we have patients pushed to the point of tears and terror that refuse to turn into the driveway. They call us afterwards at the clinic and say, "I couldn't come in because I was terrified those people would hurt me." We have people constantly that are shocked that our clinic escorts are out there every weekend, standing... standing toe-to-toe with protesters, not because we want to, but because we have to. I'm here to compel the city to start thinking about proactive ways we can address this problem. The city of Charlotte recently passed a noise ordinance that I think would be immensely helpful to not only protect our clinics, but our places of worship and our places of education. The city of Jackson, Mississippi, just passed a 15-foot buffer zone that at the very least would allow us the breathing room that we need to make sure patients can access the facility without feeling in fear of their lives and their safety. Abortion is a right. Nothing said today's can change that. The city can't pass a law to criminalize abortion. What you can do is take the steps to protect people like me, who have had abortions, exist in our whole beings. We are real; we are here; our choices are valid, and they matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Tamara Avant. Tamara Avant. Please stop and allow the next speaker to speak.
Hi, good evening. My name's Tamara Avant. I am a volunteer also at a Women's Choice of Raleigh. That address is 3305 Drake Circle. I won't be sharing my personal address for obvious reasons, I think. I'm a City of Raleigh resident and a volunteer. I'm here to discuss the protests that occur outside the clinic from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. daily. The protesters have a permit to peacefully protest, so what they refer to as sidewalk counseling. I have a PhD in psychology, and I have never heard of an actual counselor who uses amplified sound or yells at clients that they are race traitors or killing their babies or insult the masculinity of their companions or partners. This is harassment, not counseling. A counselor would lose their license for that behavior. In North Carolina, patients seeking abortions must undergo a counseling session informing them of all their options and a mandatory 72-hour waiting period. When patients show up at the clinic, they have taken great time and effort to make their decisions and make well-informed decisions. It is incredibly rare for a patient to engage with a protester. Beyond being ineffective at their stated goal, protesters are traumatizing our patients. They intentionally misdirect traffic to confuse patients. They chase and stop cars that are approaching the clinic. They lie about saves they've made in the past and constantly take pictures and video of patients, their companions, their vehicles, and license plates. These are intimidation tactics. They are in no way counseling techniques. Patients have told me they don't know what the protesters are saying. They often yell over one another and are hard to understand, but that they feel intimidated, vulnerable, and incredibly uncomfortable with their presence. More than once, I've been asked, "How is this legal?" I urge City Council members to drive or walk past the clinic on a Saturday morning to observe the over 100 peaceful protesters that are abusing the limits of their permit in the city. On numerous occasions, I've been called stupid, evil, uneducated. We are followed, yelled at, and physically intimidated, sometimes by 10 or more of them standing on the easement to the clinic's property with just one or two of us there. So they are within inches of us. Sometimes this escalates to them finding us online and attempting to interfere with our personal or professional lives. In fact, just me being here tonight and using my legal name puts me as a target for their harassment, me and my family as a target for harassment in the future. Regardless of how you feel about abortion, which is a legal aspect of women's health care, harassment is not protected under First Amendment rights and should not be permitted by the city. Previous speakers haven't understood the separation between separation of church and state and the limits of what you're able to do as City Council. Limits to the permit should include things like protecting the patient's identity, allowing a buffer zone for patients to have access to health care, and to consider a noise ordinance.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you all. Now, we're going to move to matters scheduled for public hearing. Let me try one more time and see if Tom McCormick is here. He's not. Looking at Rufus, see what do you want to do? We have a special gift for Tom McCormick from the governor, but Tom didn't show up tonight, so...
He's retired.
We'll keep it, yeah. Thank you so much, Rufus and Linda, for coming down. Okay, the first item is a sidewalk installation on Rawls Drive.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. This is a petition sidewalk project along Rawls Drive. It's in southeast Raleigh. It's approximately 1,100 feet long. It's just south of Pool Road. You can see the section here identified in yellow. We've worked with the engineering department to preliminarily identify that sidewalk will be installed along the east side of the street if the council so approves. There are 30 property owners along the corridor. We received back 18 ballots for the project, 13 in favor and five against. Be happy to answer any questions. I have photos, I have layout. This is a petition sidewalk project, so be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions for staff before I open the hearing? Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? This is the Rawls Drive sidewalk petition. If you do, please come on down.
Good evening. My name is Mason Powell. I live on Rawls Drive. I am also...
Wait just one minute, because we can't, it's very hard to hear you. Just one minute. Okay, okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Yeah, just pull the microphone down a little closer. There you go.
I'm short, I guess. Good evening. My name is Mason Powell. I am a resident of 724 Rawls Drive. I am also the president of the Homones Association in the area. I sent a requisition to try to have the sidewalks put in our neighborhood, which would enhance our neighborhood a lot. We're located on Pool Road and Rawls Drive. There is apartment section across our subdivision where lots of children cross that intersection going to the school on Cooper Road. Also, the street is very narrow, but we have lots of seniors that walk a distance to Pool Road to catch the bus. The traffic is very, very busy. The sidewalk will also help our senior citizen and the children that go to the park on Cooper Road. I ask that you approve the sidewalk petition. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item?
Mayor McFarland did receive a letter from Jeff Spotts, who is in opposition, and he couldn't be at the meeting and ask that I provide information.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark Bailey. I live at 753 Rawls Drive. I'm going to be one of the property owners that will, the sidewalk will affect. That'll be eight-foot property that's going to be taken away encroachment upon the property. Now, we participated. I see that y'all have an encroachment aspect of putting trees in at other areas. Y'all did this in our property, and everyone on the side which is going to be affected by the sidewalk had the trees placed in the area, placed in that encroachment area. So basically, the sidewalk is going to remove all the trees that y'all just planted five years ago to place the sidewalk in on the side of the thing. As an alternative, I would say, since people are speeding down the road, Rawls Road, trying to get to Bug Elementary and trying to get to the amphitheater, I say why don't you install speed bumps instead to slow the traffic down as an alternate method? So I'm opposed to the petition.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close the hearing. Sorry, I was checking on the person that stood up in the back. We'll close the hearing and bring discussion back to the table. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, we have petition annexation. This is...
Staff has some comments. This is linked to the next item as well, Mayor.
Good evening. I want to talk to you tonight about a contiguous petition annexation on Lewisburg Road and call to your attention that this is concurrent with the rezoning that appears immediately following on the agenda, Z1319. To apply zoning, you would need to annex, and if you annex, you must apply zoning. So I would encourage you to consider these items together. You need to take two separate actions, but I think your opinion about one would inform your opinion about the other. So the petition annexation is for the purpose of building multifamily, and it's currently vacant. It's contiguous with our corporate limits, but not within the ETJ, which is why it has to be annexed to apply the city zoning. It's currently zoned highway district, which is a Wake County district that allows a fair amount of retail, and water and sewer are readily available to the site. So here's a look at that site. We're on the north side of Lewisburg Road, just east of Ligon Mill, about halfway between Ligon Mill and Forestville Road. So here you can see the utility lines coming through and approaching the site. A fair amount of topography on the site. View from Lewisburg Road, as you can see, vacant property. So the rezoning request, the same four and a half acres, again, going from that highway district to... Let me back up. Madam Mayor, I think you want to hold the hearing for the annexation request. First, would you like to hear the zoning presentation before you hold the annexation hearing?
We'll do them concurrently, so we'll go ahead and hold the annexation and then hear the rezoning request and do them together.
Great. So this is consistent with the 2030 comprehensive plan overall, although it is consistent with the future land use map. The Forestville CAC has voted in favor, and the planning commission also recommend approval. So again, just a reminder of where we are, thinking a little bit more about the uses around this site. You have a fair amount of residential surroundings. So you have single-family to the north and west, and also to the south, and some townhomes and commercial property to the east there. Again, that great picture of the site. So there's some conditions here. So they have prohibited boarding house, dormitory fraternity, and emergency shelter type B and overnight lodging. Maximum density not to exceed 15 units an acre. They've specified the particular type of protective yard that would be provided as part of the neighborhood transition required by the code, and then also gone above and beyond to specify that any required understory tree would need to be an evergreen species, and they've also specified a seven-foot fence as part of the transition to the residential adjacent property. They've specified a minimum building setback from Lewisburg Road from the right-of-way and also a parking setback, and then also a protective yard with an average width along the frontage of Lewisburg, provided that no... And then with a minimum there, an average width and a minimum of the protective yard along Lewisburg. And then finally, they are exempting themselves from the block perimeter standards here. So if you think back about what the situation is here, there's not a lot for them to connect to, and they're just taking that off the table for themselves.
Where's the ingress and egress on that side?
That's a great question. So because of the grade, my understanding is that they expect egress to be, access to be mostly on the western point of the site.
How many total units?
I was just getting to that slide.
Sorry.
You read my mind. So the maximum density here is 15 units an acre, a maximum of 64 units, and would allow, because it's a residential mixed-use district, they could have a small amount of non-residential use. So, but they'd have to be at the corner, two public streets at the ground floor corner unit of the building. So some limits there. So the urban form designation here is Parkway Corridor. They've done a lot with their conditions to try to mimic the Parkway frontage, but they have stopped short of actually applying the Parkway frontage. The requested rezoning here is inconsistent with the... And the slide says one thing, but I believe this is actually... Yeah, this is actually residential mixed-use, not neighborhood mixed-use. But it is inconsistent with that low-density designation on the future land use map, consistent with the plan overall, though. So a number of consistent policies here, a handful, just a few inconsistent. Again, the Forestville CAC split vote, but does recommend approval, and the planning commission recommends approval. What questions can I answer for you about the annexation or the rezoning before you open the two public hearings?
I have a question. If this was not approved by right, what could be placed there?
Oh, the highway, what the highway district allows? A fair amount of retail, but not as much residential. So the residential density is limited significantly, but commercial is allowed.
I have a question. Do we know the reason for the split vote at the CAC meeting?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I could look at the staff report and find that out for you.
Thank you. Well, open the hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this item, either the rezoning or the annexation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Chad Essig with Coroner Spruill, 301 Fayette Street, Suite 1900. Here this evening on behalf of the applicant. As Bynum noted, this site is comprised of two parcels that are roughly just under four and a half acres on the northwest side of Lewisburg Road between Ligon Mill Road and Forestville Road. As Bynum noted, the property is contiguous to Raleigh's corporate limits. It's currently located within Wake County's jurisdiction and is zoned highway district under the county's UDO. There is existing water and sewer that runs along the front of the site, and so obviously, we're seeking annexation to be able to utilize those public utilities and to put forward a multifamily project. The... And as Bynum noted in the, and the question was asked by Mr. Branch, in the county's HD zoning district, it would allow by right and along with other special use permits, certain non-residential uses such as neighborhood-oriented retail with gas sales, self-storage, service repair, a number of non-residential uses that would be allowed under the existing zoning that would not be allowed by the zoning that we are proposing, the RX3 conditional use. So just to recap where we are, northeast of this site is, this is the Highland Creek neighborhood, single-family and townhome development here. To the west of the site is the Rolling Hills neighborhood, Rolling Ridge neighborhood, which is also located within the county's jurisdiction and zoned HD. Across Lewisburg Road, this is the Brighton neighborhood. And then kind of to the north and east, this is zoned IX3 and is currently developed with self-storage facility. If you go further to the north and the east, this is the Forestville Shopping Center here, which has a number, significant amount of retail, Lowe's Foods, CVS, number of food, fast food, and as well as some multifamily right here, the Brighton Point Apartments. So our proposed rezoning from the county's HD to RX would eliminate the non-residential uses that are allowed under the existing county zoning and would allow more dense residential along this significant corridor capped at 15 units an acre. We believe that to be the most appropriate use and density, given the character of the surrounding area and that the fact that this property is located along a four-lane divided highway of US 401 with its only access to that highway. I will note that the 15 units an acre, the zoning condition that we've placed on it is consistent with the density of this townhome developments that are along the Lewisburg corridor. I believe this townhome development here, just immediately to the east, is around 11 units an acre. And as you go further up to this townhome development up here, that is developed at about 16 units an acre. So as also noted in the staff report, from a traffic standpoint, it's noted that this site, the development that we're proposing, the projected trip generation would be less than if... than if this site was developed under the existing county zoning, given the non-residential uses that are currently allowed. We did present this case to the Fourville CAC at two separate meetings, in May and June. I think there was a question asked about the split vote from Ms. Mendel. The, I will say that the folks that supported it were very excited about there being residential here, as opposed to there being some commercial or potential gas station use here. The concerns that I heard expressed were having renters or folks' apartments on the site was the concerns that were expressed, and obviously there were traffic concerns, just general traffic concerns that were expected with any development. I will say that after the CAC meeting, I did meet with a couple of folks that live in the Highland Park Neighborhood, which spawned the conditions regarding the 20-foot transitional yard buffer, type-two transitional yard buffer along the northern and western boundary with the increased height fence, or fence height, as well as, there's already really good vegetation on this site that'll be in that 20-foot transition yard, but to the extent additional plannings are required, we committed to those being evergreen species of those additional plannings. So I won't go through all the zoning conditions. I think Ms. Bynum did a good job of that, unless there's questions specifically about them. But as noted, this proposal is consistent with the urban form map and the overall comprehensive plan. While it is inconsistent with the low-density designation on the future land use map, if you look at the future land use map, all property outside the city's jurisdiction is mapped low-density. I think that's more of a placeholder, as opposed to an indicator of future land use patterns, especially along a corridor like this, where you have a four-lane divided corridor. So we think that this rezoning would eliminate those non-residential uses and allow more dense residential in the areas that we wanted along our major corridors, and allow more diverse and dense housing stock where it's needed. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have, but we would respect for the request that you approve the annexation and approve the rezoning request.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I just have one question. Chad, why can't we do Parkway frontage? I know you're mimicking it, so why, why do you feel the need not to do the Parkway frontage?
The real challenge on this site, I don't...
I know it has a lot of topography on it.
Lot of topography on the front of the site where it drops off. There's also the sewer easement, and the sewer line that serves this runs across the frontage of the site, and so under, if you were to apply that Parkway frontage as it currently exists, you would have to put that behind that sewer easement, and it goes further into the site and really limits your developable area. So what we've tried to do is mimic with parking setbacks, the 40-foot parking setbacks, and then we've said, we'll provide that 50-foot average protective yard along the front, so that in some portions it may be 75 feet, and in some portions it could be down to 10 feet towards where you get to the access point that Ms. Walters was pointing out, where you have a little bit less area where you can do that full 50-feet protective yard.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions before I open it up? Okay, well, the hearing is open, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in support of this case? Oh, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this case?
I don't know that I'm, this is Rebecca Burmester, 2121 North Hills Drive, Apartment I. I don't know that I'm actually speaking in opposition. I want to ask council, what leverage do you have to try to get this to be affordable housing? All of you are on record as being in favor of affordable housing, and allow me to tell you that 80% of AMI is not affordable for Raleigh schoolteachers, for Raleigh police officers, for the people that work in the grocery stores, for the people that work in your banks. So what leverage, before you vote on this, what leverage can you bring to bear that will allow, and please, God, tell me that it will be for more than five years? I cannot believe you all sold your souls to John Kane for five measly years. So that would be my concern. I am not opposed to the development. I think it makes perfect sense for that site, but please, look at how you can leverage affordable housing into this site. Thank you.
Okay, is there, hold the staff. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this case? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing and bring it back to the table for discussion.
Well, this is in my district. I guess she raises a good point, and I was wondering if the applicant has given any thought to providing any units, any affordable units?
So, may I ask a question, Mr. Cox? To the lady who came up, would you describe, if you will, Madam Attorney, the statute that exists in the state of North Carolina that doesn't allow us to have inclusionary zoning?
I'm well aware that we do not have a...
We would like for the city attorney to answer that question without interruption, please, ma'am.
There's not a statute per se. There's just only certain powers allowed under the zoning power, which is Article 19 and Section 168 of the General Statutes, and that has not been interpreted to allow mandatory inclusionary zoning. As we've said in the past, you should look at it at a case-by-case basis, and I don't know whether that anybody's had those conversations or not, but I guess we're at the public hearing now, so, I mean, you can ask him, but I think we're pretty well down the road.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So that's my question.
To answer your question, I think, you know, this is the first time this issue's come up. I will say that, you know, we're dealing with a very challenging site here that is, we're talking at most 60 units, and in an area of Raleigh that I think will be affordable, it will be affordable naturally, without there being restrictions on, you know, how many units and that sort of thing. And so I would, you know, I think, you know, again, given the small site, the small nature, we're not talking about 40 stories or, you know, a lot of units that are going to be constructed here, and so I think putting restrictions, you know, conditions on specific to affordable housing would be a challenge for this site, given the economics of it, and, but, you know...
Do you know if it's on a transit corridor?
I don't know that, I don't believe there is transit on this corridor. There's, I don't believe there's transit. Doesn't, this site doesn't have access to transit. I'll let transportation staff speak to that.
Let me just make one quick comment, and that is just the law of supply and demand, and you are providing, you are asking to have less retail and more residential units, and the more residential units that we can provide, then that helps with the overall affordability. And I know it's frustrating, and we want to force affordability at a certain level into all the projects we can, but some of them, like this one with the topography and the other issues, do not lend themselves to that. So we are helping simply by adding the number of units to the stock.
Anyone else? Motion to approve.
Second. Which one? The annexation?
Going the annexation, we have to do the annexation first.
Yeah, just specify, because the annexation is just a regular motion, and remember you have a consistency statement on the other end, that they're together, and so you probably wouldn't want to grant the annexation without an intent to rezone, because we wouldn't have any...
Okay. Sorry, I thought I needed to do reverse. So, what was a motion for annexation or for the other? I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated October 1, 2019, contained in the agenda material and to approve the zoning...
No, wait, 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 wait.
The annexation has to be first.
I thought this, I thought I did that first.
There wasn't a vote, though.
Okay. So just make a motion for the annexation.
Sorry, I know it's confusing.
Motion to annex. Thought I did that first.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay.
May I read, may I read the consistency?
Sure, absolutely. Go for it.
I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated October 1, 2019, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment.
Second.
My motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you.
David, to answer your question, 25L is the closest that goes out there to Wake Tech campus.
Long ways away.
Right.
Yeah, now, there's no transit within walking distance. I do just want to clarify, just say out loud, that the rezoning includes a de facto amendment to the future land use map from low-density to medium-density residential. Just want to say that out loud.
That's the state law.
That's the consensus. Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Z 1519.
Right, so this is another rezoning. This is a request to rezone just under 13 acres from industrial, industrial mixed-use three-story height limit with parking limited frontage to RX residential mixed-use seven-story height limit with a green frontage and conditions. It is consistent with the future land use map. The Planning Commission recommends approval. Your Atlantic CAC recommends approval, and we're having the public hearing tonight, not on September 3rd.
Okay.
So just a look at the zoning in this area and a little bit of a reminder of where we are. So this is industrial, we're just inside the Belt Line, and I think I have a, there's a fair amount of industrial and commercial mixed-use in this area. I have an aerial photo, which is helpful. You can see how this relates to the new Wegmans that are our registered native, Mr. Cox mentioned at the earlier meeting this afternoon, so just help orient you, you're east of Wake Forest Road here. Couple of views of the site, looking from Wake Town and industrial. The proposed conditions here are limit density to no more than 500 residential units, and what that looks like in your entitlement change is a reduction in your office entitlement, a significant reduction in your retail entitlement, and a removal of your industrial entitlement altogether, because you're moving out of the IX District and the residential mixed-use district, a significant increase in the residential density, and a significant increase in the number of units allowed, some changes in your front and side street setback. So a setback now required because of the RX District, but can't be a setback as far as IX would allow. So it is consistent with the high-density residential designation on the future land use map here, and the green frontage is consistent with the urban form map guidance here, the, this isn't a city growth center, and also the urban thoroughfare designation. Consistent with the comprehensive plan, no inconsistent policies have been identified, and the Atlantic CAC recommends approval, as does the Planning Commission. What questions could I answer for you about this case?
I've got, I've been contacted by several nearby residents, I guess, who are concerned about traffic impacts. Is this going to require a traffic impact analysis of any kind?
They have limited the number of conditions, the number of units specifically to address the TIA issue, so rather than requiring a traffic study, they have limited the units in such a way that there's no anticipated change in the trip count. So that's, that's a common way typically we ask you either to complete a traffic study or to condition your entitlement down to be comparable in trip generation to what you currently have entitled.
And does that take into account the Wegmans?
It's really based on what's on the site and what the site would generate, not so much about the context around it. So remember, if IX3 zoning here now, which would allow a fair amount of retail and office and industrial square footage, they've foregone, you know, they're giving up all of that in favor of the residential entitlement instead.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions before we open the hearing?
Yep.
Yeah, oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Similar question. I'm seeing the staff is discussing improving transit options, so I'd like to hear a little bit more about what those improving transit options are that staff is referring to in the report.
I need to look specifically at what you're looking at. I'm imagining it's about implementation of the Wake Transit Plan.
Well, it's under the, it's just the conclusion paragraph of the staff report. Says this is in a large mixed-use area with improving transit options. So I'm just wondering what those are.
Well, it's on the corner, Six Forks and Atlantic, so...
Right.
So does that mean it's a high-frequency transit corridor?
I'm going to have to look at the staff report to pull up that detail, unless transportation staff here is at the ready to answer you more directly.
He's coming.
I believe if I understand the context of the comment in the staff report, that the transit opportunities are improving in this area generally. As part of the Midtown Transportation, Midtown Area Study, we're looking at transportation options in this area for potential BRT and high-frequency transit service. There are also high-frequency routes proposed in this area, along Wake Forest Road, I believe, and Six Forks, to the east of this site, not directly adjacent to the site. And then as far as specific transit amenities, those would be addressed now, we've codified those, so certain developments are required now under code to have to install transit amenities as part of their site development package.
Of course, the, what the question is really getting at is similar to the last case, and that is, if this is a high-frequency transit corridor, then that is a highly desirable place for us to put affordable housing units, and that's really the interest here. This is like, how many units are being requested, again?
It's a maximum of 500.
Yeah, so I think this is a clear candidate for affordable housing condition.
Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in support of this case?
Good evening. I'm Tom Johnson with the Law Firm of Williams Mullen, here on behalf of the applicant. Don't want to go the wrong way. I'm Law Firm of Williams Mullen, 301 Fayetteville Street, Suite 1700, here in Raleigh. As was stated by staff, this is, you know, consistent with the comprehensive plan, is consistent with the future land use plan. Excellent location to put some more housing density because of the existing retail and services that are already there. It's highly desirable by this developer to make sure there's good connection with the new Wegmans in Midtown East, to make it walkable and bikeable, to be able to have that connection. Transit, obviously, is something that is desirable as well at this location, obviously adjoining the railroad. At one point, that was considered as a transit option that now is further down the road, but it's there if it ever does occur, because the existing rail line is already there. The other thing it'll do is provide for some sidewalk along Six Forks Road that doesn't exist on that side, and we're asking, you know, we're suggesting green frontage here also along Six Forks Road to really enhance the way the property looks. You know, in addition to Wegmans, there's other retail and restaurants, there's Costco, so it's an area that needs this additional services. In terms of our community meeting when we had it, we had, the ones that attended were two business owners in the area that were interested in having more folks near their businesses in order to be able to have customers. That's what we've heard the entire time. You know, I understand what Councilmember Mendel says about traffic, but that's why, particularly in talking to the CAC, we reduced the unit count to 500 to address that concern. And the other thing it does in terms of affordability, as was mentioned earlier, it provides for more housing in this area, and just really by having that housing available would make it more affordable to those that are in the area. I mean, it's going to, just because of the housing supply that doesn't already exist there, and it will really be a change in the real complexion of this area. But I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have in terms of the request, but this is one that was foreseen long ago that would develop into high-density residential and really should because of the other businesses that are around. I mean, it makes complete sense, as well as the proximity to downtown and being able to get in and out without, without difficulty in terms of multiple locations, which you can travel from this location to downtown.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I've got a question. So how are you, couple parking questions. How are you going to accommodate parking for these 500 units?
Addition, we're going to surface and structured parking to be able to accommodate it, but we will, we will accommodate it on-site.
Well, and, okay. How many spaces per unit?
We'll meet the parking requirements that are, that are in the code.
So, so you'll just be going with the, I mean, here we are talking about... So, you'll just be going with the... I mean, here we are talking about, I mean, you're talking about the public benefits being high-density residential in a city-growth area next to transit, but you're saying we're still going to build suburban parking?
Well, I mean, it's the parking that's required under the code. I mean, if the council wants to have a, you know, reduction in parking, we would talk about that. But, I mean, the code does take that into account in any event. So, that's, you know, you've got to meet those requirements.
Okay. So, can I...
What's your acreage? I mean, acreage is 12 acres. But it's an unusually shaped 12 acres. I mean, you can say, hey, 12 acres, but you've got the strip that goes along. There are some sewer easements and things like that that we've got to deal with on-site, so it's not the easiest site to develop.
Well, you're not talking about garden-style apartments on this anyway. Not at that count.
Yeah.
So, can I ask Eric, just to tell us what the parking minimum for this kind of project would be? Okay.
But again, the whole idea is because of the other amenities, you know...
I mean, I just, obviously, you just said you're going to meet the city standard, so I'd like to know what the city standard is.
Right, no, I understand. And I just don't have that readily in front of me either, as far as how many per unit.
Since the applicant has chosen urban frontage, parking standard is a minimum of one and a maximum of two spaces per unit.
Okay, so urban frontage allows you to go down to one per unit. Is that...
Right.
But you don't... I get the sense that's not what you plan.
Well, I mean, we, you know...
You don't plan to meet the minimum. You just plan to meet...
We'll be somewhere in between, but we're not planning on parking this again because of the configuration of the site. We can't have a huge amount of parking on here. It doesn't make sense. And we want to encourage the use of mass transit, the use of biking, the use of walking. I mean, the very first thing my client came to me and talking about in this instance was we want to be adjoining where the Wegmans going in at Midtown East so that people can walk to Midtown East.
Sure.
So, and we chose an urban frontage because that was suggested by staff from the very beginning. We chose a green frontage because that makes sense along Six Forks Road to make it an appealing view along Six Forks Road. So, I mean, all of that combined, we're not looking at doing a suburban-style apartment complex.
Right, and of course, it's maybe a catch-22 that by adopting an urban frontage, that gives you more developable land, but if you turn around and develop that land as parking, I'm not sure we're really getting the benefit that we're intending...
We're losing frontage anyway because the green frontage is in this report.
I'm talking about the urban frontage on the other street.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
But we have to do the buffer on Six Forks Road, so you lose some... With green frontage, we're going to lose some developable land along there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in support of this? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this case?
Rebecca Burmester, 2121 North Hills Drive, Apartment I. I venture to say that none of you sitting at this table are renters. You can tell yourself all you want that building more market-rate housing is going to help those people, of which I am one, who need affordable housing in this city. You can tell yourself that all you want, but it isn't happening. It is not happening. And you all have at your disposal, and I realize the state laws in North Carolina are very primitive, and we don't seem to be making any progress in that direction. But you can take a carrot-and-stick approach, people. You don't have to approve everything. You do not have to say, hey, the site is a difficult site, therefore, it doesn't make sense to include affordable housing. If you are going to talk the talk of affordable housing, then you need to walk the walk. So, I'm sorry, but I am so far very disappointed in this city council's ability to walk the walk.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this case?
Everybody, Josh Bradley.
Josh, what's your address?
1324 Spring Lawn Court, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27609. I want to concur with the previous speaker. I mean, it's nice that 500 units, I guess, will increase housing to the city, but with a, you know, a 50-some thousand deficit in affordable housing, and even the affordable housing at 80% AMI is not really affordable to people that actually work. I'm here to tell you. So, I don't know, instead of just, you know, approving everything, maybe we just stop approving until we have people that come forward with affordable housing plans. Until we get the, until we get what we need taken care of, because it is a problem. And there are a lot of people that are going to work in all this area. And if we're not careful, they're going to be in a position where they can't afford to live and walk to work because they'll be priced out of the neighborhood. And that's all. Have a great night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this case? Okay, seeing that, we will close the hearing and bring it back to the table.
So, I'm not prepared to support this case on a couple of grounds. One is that here it is, high-frequency transit corridor, city growth center, high-density residential units being planned here, both in terms of housing affordability. I think this is a huge opportunity that we would miss if we don't consider affordable housing condition. Likewise, this is a huge opportunity to plan for transit and not for more cars on the road. And this location is a prime opportunity to say, we're going to reduce our parking. We're going to actually build units. We're not going to build parking like we would in a suburban site. So, I would love to have more conversation about those two items. I'm not going to support it as it is.
I have a question for Councilman Stevenson, because you've been here the longest. Do you have a suggestion on how we can reduce, how we can go against the code that we approved for the parking?
We're not going against the code.
No, I'm asking if it's require one space per unit. Can we...
Let them off of that as a condition.
Okay.
So, you know, we have to weigh these things out because we have to look at what by right they could do. And this place is retail-choked already. But at the same time, we are looking to maximize housing on the transit corridors like Mr. Stevenson has been pushing for and as well as others at this table. So, I think it could be a happy medium, and maybe we could reach a, you know, pretty good solution. I'd like to put it in GNR Committee if Mrs. Crowder's would be willing to take that, so we can see what we can hammer it at a little bit more.
So, if you've closed the public hearing, what is... What's the...
If you close the hearing tonight, conditions can be modified for 30 days. So, that would take us to, what, October 30th?
So, I just want to make sure you had time to get it and come back in that 30-day... Or leaving it open might be more preferable. I just didn't want you to get in a crunch where you weren't meeting.
Okay. So, we'll leave the hearing open. We'll leave the hearing open and refer it to GNR.
Is that acceptable? Come back to date certain, as in come back a date certain.
Yeah.
Does it have to have, come back?
Yes, you should specify a date when you're going to continue the hearing, too.
What's our first meeting? Well, I've got to work it in. So, what's our first November meeting?
November 6th.
November 6th.
Let's use that as a date certain.
The evening or the day meeting?
I don't have a...
The public hearings would be in the evening.
Evening, okay. Just want to make sure.
Well, we just did the Russ Bus.
The hearing was closed. It was a special item.
That's right, got you.
I think I can manage him. We can have that back.
So, I just wanted to make sure. November 6th, and what are the areas...
The hearing is open. It's going to go to committee.
We'll be in touch with you about when they schedule the committee date.
Right, and the other, well, the only other question I had is what are the areas of concern? Because I'm hearing some things, just the two, the parking and the, and the, what? Affordable? Parking and affordable is what?
Yeah, that's primarily it.
Because I just want to know so we can be in preparation for that meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Just let us know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the 2030 comprehensive plan update, CP2E19.
So, I just want to remind you that we have broken the, your advice, broken the comprehensive plan up into sections for your review. You adopted the first section, managing our growth, earlier this summer. You discussed coordinating land use transportation items, B, C, and D, this afternoon. My understanding is they're going to all come back on November 6th together. And then, the final piece is what we're talking about tonight, growing successful neighborhoods and communities. It includes the historic preservation element, arts and culture, the downtown section, and also area-specific guidance. So, I want to talk a little bit about what's in that, each of those. So, preservation offers recommendations to promote the preservation of Raleigh's cultural resources and architectural heritage, divided up into five sections. There are 33 policies in the section. Two were revised. There are four new proposed as part of the update. And in the 40 action items in the section, five were complete. There are four that have been revised, four are new, and two were removed. So, the new policies here are around cultural and historic resource programming, publicly-owned historic resource awareness, and study support for publicly-owned historic resource preservation. So, you'll remember there've been some changes in parks and recreation, parks, recreation, and cultural resources, and how we address cultural resources through our city organization. So, a good number of the changes that you're seeing here are coming from that Cultural Resources Work Group and what their work plan looks like and how they're approaching their work. And then, one more related to housing assistance and addressing low and mid-income, low and mid-income housing assistance programs to include historic structures. The new actions here are largely around advocacy and education. So, some ideas about interpretation, resource management, visitation, and also historic resources in our museum program. Couple of maps have been updated to reflect just the current state of affairs. So, the inventory map of existing and potential national historic landmarks and places has been updated. Similarly, the National Register for Historic Districts has been, that map has been updated, and also the Historic Landmarks map. We have updated the Historic Overlay Districts map to reflect districts adopted since 2009. So, Oberlin Village and Glenwood, Brooklyn have been adopted by this council since 2009. Reminder about what the White Paper forecasted we would change in this section. So, the Raleigh Historic Development Commission had changed its name since we adopted the plan in 2009. And similarly, I mentioned this earlier, the change in the structure in Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources in terms of the emphasis on publicly-owned and publicly-programmed cultural resources. So, we had forecasted that in the White Paper, and we did it. The updates to the maps, which I've already highlighted, and then some updates to action items to reflect not just what we have completed, but also new ideas about work plan. This section is very well-aligned with our growing successful neighborhoods and communities, as well as managing our growth. City planning coordinated with our Raleigh Historic Development Commission, including Historic Preservation Staff and also the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Staff. I know you all know Troy Burton. And a particular city comment that we got here was that we should do more to prevent the demolition of historic homes. Planning Commission made a couple of recommendations here. So, they have, in taking to heart that public comment, they have proposed a change to the demolition policy, specifying that replacement proposals should provide justification for demolition and removal, including the recycling of lumber and brick and salvage of usable fittings and hardware, basically emphasizing reuse and recycling before disposal. And then, they have suggested designating two particular policies as key policies. So, those would be considered almost by default in any rezoning case where there are historic resources present. So, the mitigating impacts on historic sites and adaptive use in parking. And then, they have recommended a series of edits, which you can see detailed in your packet, that are, I would not call them content-rich, but more style-rich from the Raleigh Historic Development Commission, except for one, which was a policy about adaptive use on the Dorothea Dix campus. We are, as part of Dorothea Dix Phase 1, working on a more extensive and thorough amendment to the plan that would reflect the planning that has been completed at Dix already, so that the Dix Master Plan and the Comprehensive Plan would be well-aligned. And I believe our coordination on that is likely to begin this fall. They were really looking, you know, they've been in front of you in front of a couple of recent work sessions trying to get that together. And so, we have been advised, Planning Commission of that, and they thought it made sense to wait until after that had happened. The second section up for consideration tonight is arts and culture. This lays out our city's vision for art in Raleigh, very broadly speaking. So, five sections here, 24 policies. Five were revised. There are four new and five removed. Of the 40 actions, 15 were complete, and there were 20 new, 12 removed. The changes that you're seeing here are really a result of the Raleigh Arts Plan that was completed recently. So, new policies largely encourage art. And some of the outdated, some of the policies that were removed were considered outdated, really out of step with our thinking about arts based on the arts plan that we have adopted recently. So, here we are trying to get the Arts Plan into the comp plan so that our more recently adopted policy and strategy is reflected in our comprehensive planning document. So, lots here to consider. And then, again, just trying to get things up to date so they match between the two guiding documents. So, the Creative Life Raleigh Arts Plan, the Person for Art, Arts and Economic Prosperity. Of course, we worked with arts staff in the Parks Department, and also the Downtown Experience Plan are reflected here, and we're consulted in updating this. Some pretty straightforward stuff that we were trying to, we went in knowing we wanted to update. So, the statistical data related to arts impact, reassessing and removing the, or considering either reassessing or removing the Arts and Entertainment Districts section. That's not really how we're thinking about things right now. And then, acknowledging historic resources as an important part of arts and culture and emphasizing arts and culture as an economic engine. Very closely aligned with economic prosperity and equity and the growing successful neighborhoods' vision themes. Heavy collaboration with the Raleigh Office of Raleigh Arts. There were not a lot of public comments about this particular section of the plan, so not a lot of change made here. And the majority of public outreach for these changes really is part of that Creative Life, the Raleigh Arts Plan. That's the big public process around the changes that we're bringing forward and the update. That's how those ideas were vetted. Planning Commission does recommend adding an action to study site plan standards for opportunities to increase flexibility for the incorporation of public art. And also, just some clarifying language to policies and actions. You can find the details of that in the certified recommendation in your packet. And that brings us to downtown, which is very specific guidance for the central business district of the city. Really tailors what typically are citywide policies to our downtown, which is special. Seven sections here, 91 policies. Only eight were revised, six were removed, and 62 actions. We have made very good progress on implementing the comprehensive plan for downtown. So, some revision, one revision, one new policy, and 12 removed. So, mostly removing policies that are redundant with what the UDO now requires and simplifying guidance, especially maps where the UDO has made some outcomes more predictable. So, also remove some actions from implemented plans. So, Raleigh Union Station now exists. We don't need to plan for it anymore. The renovation of Moore Square Transit Station, Moore Square Park also now open, how exciting. And then, uh, the Capitol Boulevard Corridor Study, the Inside the Belt Line Study. Some new action here around pedestrian counts, uh, looking for more information about what kind of pedestrian traffic we're seeing downtown and updating that regularly. This was, has been, is being reinstated after having been removed. We feel like it's useful for economic development programs, it's just good background information to have. Series of maps updated in this element, the Future Land Use Map. We had included historically an inset of the Downtown area, the Future Land Use Map in this section. There's an inset of this same area on the Future Land Use Map in the Land Use Chapter, and it just didn't feel, um, particularly useful, especially since most of us rely on iMaps for the map. The Priority Pedestrian and Green Streets map has been repositioned as Downtown Connections. So some of the same concept in terms of, um, non-motorized action or, um, travel, but, um, just, uh, clarifying that, cleaning that up. The Parking Garage Constraints, we now call driveway access constraints. Driveway, whether or not it's structured parking or some other, uh, car access point. And then, uh, minor updates to the Retail Streets designations. So, uh, we looked, of course, at the Strategic Plan, the Downtown Plan, which was adopted, uh, what, back in, what, 2014? The Street Design Manual and the UDO, um, completion of some important capital projects really are all the things that informed updates here. And a lot of this was forecasted by the White Paper. So the plans that I've mentioned already, revising the Urban Design Section to better align with our historic preservation goals, strengthening the Housing Section, the call for the Downtown Streetscape Plan, and then also a review of the Urban Design Guidelines. So three vision themes particularly relevant here, economic prosperity and equity, the Coordinating Land Use and Transportation theme, and also managing our growth. And, uh, of course, we consulted with the Urban Design Center, Transportation Planning, and the Office of Sustainability for this particular section. Very few comments related to Downtown, one in particular for a sports stadium. I believe this person is really interested in baseball, not soccer. And then a request for review of zoning height guidance. The Planning Commission recommends adding language to existing policies about the historic nature of the Warehouse District, and also language about public art and performance spaces. They also recommend, uh, stronger policy language about protected bike lanes, and replacing a policy about street parking to position it a bit more broadly about access to curbside space in general.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, under our Policy DT 1.3, the underutilized sites in Downtown, were they identified, those sites identified?
Yes, ma'am, we did a, um, real estate study about-
I couldn't-
-city-owned sites.
I was looking them, okay, so it's those sites?
Right.
There's nothing different?
Right. Right, led by the Real Estate Office with HRNA.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, as far as the Downtown Connections, was the BRT plan considered? Or was, is it something that has to be added later?
I think probably the details of that would be added later. So remember where we are, remember this content was generated a good while ago-
Right.
-and the planning for the BRT was really not that specific. You'll remember the Wake Transit Plan basically drew a box around Downtown and said, "We'll figure that out with real detail, a little bit farther down the road." And that, as I understand, that is still, um, in flux, if not, you know, not perfectly resolved yet. So I would imagine, and we have said, going into this process, of course, in particular, talking about the Land Use and Transportation sections of the plan, that we would revise those as the details of the Wake Transit Plan become more clear. But I think this is another section where, of course, we would wanna make further revision when we have better information about what the plan is for BRT.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I have a bunch of questions too.
Hey, great.
Are you, are you finished, or?
I have one more section about area-specific guidance.
Okay, do you, do you wanna go through that, or should I ask my questions now?
You can ask them now, if it's something she's already covered yet.
Okay, yeah, um, for the, um, for the Arts and Culture section, AC 1.10, it talks about amend the existing city ordinance to increase incrementally the allocation for public art in capital improvement plan projects from half a percent to two percent. So if we pass this, does that mean that happens?
No, ma'am, I think you'd have to adopt that as part of the budget to fund it.
Okay, so it's just a recommendation?
Policy is, is just good advice.
Okay.
It's not the rules.
Okay, and then, um, in the Historic Preservation Section, there are, uh, a whole bunch of, um, policies that I, I really like, but I don't know, I don't know that we're backing them up in any way with, with, um... So what do we need to do to make that, um, make that happen more? Like HP 2.5 says, "Conserving older neighborhoods. Develop plans and programs to conserve older neighborhoods that have a unique scale and identity but are not yet protected by an overlay district." Do we need to put more teeth in this somehow, or does that come somewhere else?
So again, I would say, uh, good advice. Do you feel like, um, the direction you're giving to the Historic Districts Commission and/or Preservation Staff, and the funding that you're putting towards particular programs? I mean, I think that's the, that's the implementation part, right? So it's not that you don't like the policy, but that you have concerns about-
That we have the teeth to make it real.
-efficacy of implementation.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Right.
And then, um, in the Downtown, um, section, it talks a lot about bikes and things. Do, should we add in other sorts of transportation? I mean, we didn't, we weren't prepared for scooters. Now I'm hearing there's golf cart stuff going on. Do we wanna be a little more general about what sorts of?
Right, so I think that, um, language about, um-
Yeah.
-curbside parking and moving more towards curbside access management was exactly what the Planning Commission was thinking about. And, um, scooters come and go, right? But we always, we know there will continue to be innovation in the personal mobility-
There you go, yes.
-field, and so the policies are written more broadly, I feel like, to address multimodal transportation generally, and not, and so there is some language about ride-sharing, personal mobility, um, but not, we don't, we don't name particular companies-
Okay, right.
-or technologies or vehicles.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were being broad enough to capture all of that, thank you.
So, are y'all ready for area-specific guidance?
I wasn't waiting till the end, but since we're talking about Downtown, um, there are, on page two, the document, it talks about six policies being removed. And, um, unlike the housing and the area-specific guidance section, there's no explanation given for why they're being removed. So it was a little bit hard to interpret what was intended. I will say that, um, the first one that's listed as being removed, DT 113, actually in the text of it, it looks like it's being amended and not deleted.
Not revised, revised and not deleted.
So then DT 2.8, Priority Pedestrian Streets. Just, there's no explanation of why. Actually, yeah, that's true. DT 2.27, Parking Between, Parking Beneath-
Beneath City Squares. Beneath City Squares, yeah.
Yeah, of course, Casual Square has been a topic of discussion off and on throughout the decades. And of course, for those who don't know, this is the fourth of the City Squares, the Christmas Originals that has been developed and now is ripe for redevelopment. So I'm just wondering why we would be taking this one out, when we haven't decided as a city if we're ever going to try to put parking under there as part of a redevelopment that hopefully would honor the Christmas plan, so that's a question. DT 3.2, Ground Floor Uses on Secondary Retail Streets. That one actually has an explanation, although it's in the body text, it's not tied to the actual action item. DT 6.1, Promote Use of Design Competitions for Public Facilities. I think we had a bad experience with the Moore Square Designer, but, uh, I think that's more a function of, uh, the process that we used, and, uh, not a function of the validity of using design competitions to get higher-quality design in our city. So I'd, you know, I'd prefer to have some council conversation on that one before we just say we're not gonna do competitions anymore. And then, uh, the last one, DT 2.24, Parking Garage Constrained Streets. I mean, the language that's being deleted talks about, um, various screening methods that we might use. I'm not sure why we're deleting language that would talk about screening, um, parking on garage-constrained streets.
I will say about that one in particular that the, um, UDO requires screening in the Downtown District, and also where there are urban frontages applied. So I think the thought there is that we're relying on the regulations.
Okay, so once again, uh, in the Housing section that I sat down with staff and discussed, and in the area-specific guidance that's coming up next, there are explanations. This one, except of those six, only one has an explanation.
Right.
So it's just makes, it's inconsistent, and it just makes it hard to-
Sure. We can certainly bring back a revised staff report for you, I can see where that would be helpful. I'd be happy to work on that. Area-specific guidance now, or now? Yeah. So this compiles policies and actions, uh, relevant to particular neighborhoods, smaller areas of the city. Mostly at the adoption in 2009 included, well, really at the time of adoption in 2009, included, uh, projects, plans adopted up to that time. But in the interim, we were not revising the plan to add area-specific, um, guidance for partic- in relationship to particular, uh, small-area plans. So there is a, an overview section here that introduces the topic, and then twenty-eight individual area-specific guidance subsections. We've updated the citywide map that indicates where we've completed plans. The White Paper forecasted that we should revise the introduction to the section and incorporate recent developments such as the UDO and other, other things like that into, uh, each area-specific section. And then also add, uh, sections for each of the projects that have been adopted since 2009. So that's what we have set out to do. So we've some nomenclature change here. You know, we started with the Cameron Village Plan that we bring forward, the Area Plan Report and the Comprehensive Plan Amendments at the same time for your review, so that there's some transparency in the public process about what adopting a project report means to the Comp Plan and how that might affect the rezoning process in the future. So twenty-eight plans, five were revised, nine new, and three removed. So unchanged is a good chunk of these, and I'm not gonna talk about them, aren't you glad? Arena and, uh, has been revised to incorporate the Blue Ridge Corridor Plan that was created after the Comp Plan was adopted. And then Stanhope Village, Wade Oberlin, were combined and incorporated into the Cameron Village Plan, which you adopted some time ago. And then Falls of Noose has been, uh, updated based on the Falls North project that was create, uh, completed not too long ago. New area guidance that we have already adopted, uh, so Cameron Village, Six Forks, Southern Gateway, and Falls North. Those were all instances where the, and now Avent Ferry are all projects where you adopted the project report and the Comprehensive Plan Amendments at the same time. And, um, I don't know if you have noticed in every single one of our staff reports, it says, "If you all have taken action since we wrote the staff report, your action overrides." So if, like, Avent Ferry is done, it's done, we don't have to do it again. We added guidance for, uh, well, Arena was modified to incorporate, uh, Blue Ridge, Jones Franklin, and the RCRX plans. The Blunt Street, uh, Person Street Corridor was added, Buffalo New Hope, the Capitol Boulevard Study, that's the one inside the Belt Line, and then the New Bern Corridor, also inside the Belt Line, and the West Morgan Street Plan. So all those were, we drafted up area-specific sections to add to this part of the plan. And then we revised Avent West, Cameron Park, Downtown West Gateway, King Charles, and Old East Raleigh. Those were all vetted for public comment during the update process. So Rena-Blue Ridge just combines a handful of existing, uh, projects that had already been, the project reports had been adopted by council, but the, uh, Comprehensive Plan had never been amended to reflect those plans. They generally, uh, complement each other, where something, where there were conflicts, we took the newer advice, uh, with the idea that it was fresher. Some minor changes to reflect current transit plans. As we, as best we know them now, we're clearly doing more detailed study in this area through the Western Boulevard Corridor, and also the Equitable Development Around Transit Project. Couple of policies, a handful of policies here removed. Some of the more action-oriented policies were converted to actions, and others have been superseded. Avent West, this is not modified by, um, the Avent Ferry Corridor Study. This is adjacent to that project area, and so remains. And two policies were revised to improve clarity. Blunt Person adopted, the project report adopted in 2013, but never incorporated into the plan. And the, um, one policy to implement the planned street design, which is, I believe, underway now. So it'll be complete soon, we can take it back out. And then some actions for specific improvements to functionality here. Buffalo New Hope, you'll remember this, uh, in the wake of a rezoning up there at the northeast corner of this intersection. Some, uh, new policies and actions based on, uh, community vision for this particular intersection. Cameron Park, uh, one policy removed as a result of the UDO adoption. And then we have just added clarity to the map. So the ordinance adopting, um, this talks about these transition areas, but it doesn't, they were never on the map, and it was always really frustrating to staff. So we have tried to make, again, adding clarity to the process about how things are done. Capitol Boulevard Plan, seven policies and sixteen actions. This is largely focused around green infrastructure, uh, some transportation facilities, and also some land use transitions. And then Downtown Gateway was revised to change nomenclature of the Multimodal Transit Center to Raleigh Union Station. There were multiple maps, and they were all combined to, um, try and create a more easy, easier-to-follow path in terms of what the expectation was in this area. So these are the maps that, uh, so the current version on the left and the proposed update on the right here. And the current version of the, um, proposed zoning, uh, removed. We did everything we could in the remapping to implement this as, as recommended. And then the pedestrian open space map has been removed. King Charles, uh, two actions removed, um, and actually put in the New Bern Corridor Small Area Plan. Just not really about the neighborhood, more about the corridor. So trying to get them in the place where they make the most sense. So this includes the policies from, uh, the King Charles Project. Adds a map to help, uh, document the frontage recommendations of that plan. And, um, some actions around pedestrian safety and connectivity. Old East, uh, so again, remember this content was created some time ago at, when we presented this to the Planning Commission as part of their review at that time. And again, tonight, I will say to you, we would recommend that you not adopt this. Since you have authorized an update to this plan, doesn't make sense to make changes now with that project, project, uh, only getting underway. So we would say to advise to leave the, uh, current guidance on the books and know that it is in progress to update it more thoroughly with a more focused public process. West Morgan, this includes policies about open space parking management, pedestrian access, and historic character. Planning Commission agreed with staff that you should hold off on Old East, and that is the extent of their, um, comments there on the area plan material. Can I answer questions about this particular section, or some of the stuff we've already talked about tonight?
I may, just a couple. Can you go back one to the, um, West Morgan Area Study? I'm sorry.
Just, uh, so this was adopted in 2011, and so all we're doing now is, I mean, the, the nomenclature, it says policies to be amended by the update, new policies. But what that really means is we're just taking the work that we already have finished. It's not really a new policy. It's a policy we've already established in 2011. Now we're just officially making it part of the comp.
We're codifying it in the comprehensive plan. That's right.
All right. And I guess the...
And a lot, you know, a lot of the thinking there is that it makes it more clear to the public what kind of policies they might be measured against in the context of a rezoning. And frankly, it's a lot easier for staff to manage that tracking of, are we holding everybody to the same advice?
Right. Okay. And just likewise for the, don't need to go there, but for the Buffalo New Hope, which was 2015, so that's pretty current.
Yes.
Again, when it talks about a new policy for building height, they're really...
It's new to the comp plan, but not new to Raleigh.
So it's not, yes, it's not some new height that staff is proposing. It's just codifying the height that was described by policy in the planning.
Codifying what you adopted when you adopted the project report for Buffalo New Hope.
Thank you.
That's right.
That's it.
Bynum, I have a couple of questions as it relates to older residential neighborhoods. It's policy APAB 29 West Over Parking. This is an area where we are looking at future commuter rail. We have Western Boulevard just a block over from this area. And I see here that in that particular, you want to add parking decks and relocate off of Hillsborough Street. West Over is an older neighborhood and I'd like to keep the character. The idea that we would contain parking and parking decks is not something that I could support there, especially since we're trying to, we're trying to support that this is an area where we want more walkability. So I don't quite understand that policy. I do appreciate the policy of making it more pedestrian-friendly, making some connections, but I don't understand the language about containing all that parking in decks. It doesn't make sense for a small area that's what, a block and a half?
Mm-hmm.
And then APAB 30, we're talking about a time of rezoning. Did we get some sense from people that four stories is what they were looking for there? Generally, that area is like one or two stories. So did that come from conversation in the area that, that's the APAB 30?
APAB?
Uh-huh. Thirty?
Thirty. Let me try and catch up to where you are.
Sorry.
That's okay. There's a lot to...
Yeah, it is.
Yep. I'll be, I'm not going to successfully answer that from the podium. Let me follow up on that.
Follow up on that.
Because I don't, I don't think we're going to, since I've promised this downtown to Mr. Stevenson, I think we'll be back on this, right?
Yes.
So that was...
Writing them down so I can reach out to you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Can you just name them for me? So I'm just curious.
APAB 25...
But what is the topic?
Oh, it's, it's under older residential neighborhoods.
But what is the issue that's being addressed by that?
Parking.
Parking, okay.
Connectivity and then low-density single-family.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Great.
I have a slight question. As far as the New Bern Avenue Corridor Plan, I know there's been some questions about some of the streets and alignment from 2012. Basically, if anyone wants to really go in a deeper dive, that's similar to what we, I guess we did for Old East's plan, come before council and try to schedule that conversation for an update.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah, so if citizens want that, they can make that request of you. Or if you, one of you feels strongly about that, you could raise that issue also.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? I don't have any. Okay, we'll open the hearing and ask if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to any of these items.
All right, here we go.
Yeah, come on down.
Is there a particular map you'd like for me to pull up?
Nah, I'm not sure. Maybe you don't have the Moore Square up, so that was just a plan, right?
Uh-huh. Right. I don't have Moore Square.
That's okay, no matter.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Reverend Whitley. My address is 3813 Pleasant Valley Road in Raleigh. And I just wanted to comment regarding the downtown area. We noticed that Moore Square is done now and it looks very nice. We also noticed at the time, there were homeless that were there and we don't see them anymore. However, we do know that they exist. And so we're kind of concerned that, that the homeless, if they're not there, they will move somewhere. And while not that's in Chavis Park, down by the streams, you know, in the ravines that they have there, or they moved out, were pushed out along Garner Road and they're around the trails in that area or living in the woods. And so we're kind of concerned about if there's any toleration that was included in the plan that dealt with the homeless population, not so much saying, well, we're going to put them in shelters, but creatively, looking at creative solutions that will help to deal with the homeless population. We don't seem to see them, but we know they're there. While not they're living in the alleys or, you know, they may, we have a church around the corner, St. Paul, they may, could be there. I mean, we know they're around. So we just asked if, if there was any provisions, especially in the downtown area, when we looked at this, to accommodate that.
Well, I would probably first talk about the Oak City Cares Center that we, you know, worked on with the county to be a central place for people that are experiencing homelessness that would be able to connect them with everything from healthcare to whatever social services they need, to potential housing, to...
Bus passes.
Bus passes? I mean, it's a one-stop place that people can go to access all kinds of help. It's certainly not the big answer for everything, but I think it was a substantial step.
Yeah, that's, it's, thank you. I think the challenge is that most of the homeless really don't tend to go to a one-stop shop. So I guess we were kind of thinking if there was something in the plan, I'm not sure how it would work where there was an issue that we actually went out into the communities and found them and talked to them about some of their needs or something. I don't know if it exists, so I'm not here to beat you up. I'm just here to just to...
No, I think that that's, I'm not sure that that's part of the comprehensive, I mean, I'm not sure that that fits into what this is that we're talking about.
Some of the nonprofit organizations kind of were working with a lot of the homeless population even before the park reopened because it was fenced up for extended period of time, almost close to two years. So I know there was a lot of work with those nonprofits that we financed through human relations grants and opportunities, and also we just partner with and partner with the county. But we can definitely have more of a conversation as far as there's something in particular that St. Paul may be interested in doing to, as far as that area. But the city's always looking to find ways to help those that are homeless who want to be helped.
Okay.
So just definitely just reach out and we'll connect and kind of go from there.
I just wanted to add, there are specific policies that address people living in homelessness in the housing section of the plan, which you considered at an earlier public hearing and have deferred action on. I believe that's probably going to be back in front of you on the 6th.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, thank you.
Wait, just one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, come on.
Sorry, Josh Bradley, 1324 Spring Long Court, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27609. Just, it brings up to his point, in the plan, there's the new shelters that we're building, hopefully for the bus system. A lot of the ones I've seen have the little homeless rails that they put on there to anti-homeless measures. If the buses aren't running and it's a shelter from a plate, you know, from the elements, why are we including those in the design of the benches there?
I have to talk to the design team on that. I can't, we didn't design them, so I did a first staff to follow up.
Okay. And one more quick question. The new outreach center, does it have a free bus that goes from downtown to there?
What do you mean by free bus?
Like a way that people that are experiencing homeless can get there without a charge directly, without having to walk the whole way?
Yes.
There's only a couple of blocks from there.
Passes for them to...
They have to be there to get the pass.
Yeah. So, I mean, is there a way to where they don't, they don't have to go all walk out to the center to get a pass?
I think it goes to some of the organizations that work with the homeless population, meet them and I think have a way without them having to go to the center to get passes, but that's something that can be followed up on.
We appreciate this, but we really need to keep the conversation to what's on the agenda in front of us, which is Historic Preservation, Arts and Culture downtown. We've said we're going to pick back up, so if you're specifically addressing downtown, that's fine, or area-specific guidance.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Another hand.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Robert L. Hodges, Sr. I'm the pastor of St. Paul AV Church at 402 West Ederson Street. This, this may be a loaded question, but in all of this development, we are located right downtown. How is this going to affect St. Paul and, or is it going to affect...
Sir, can you talk into the mic?
Yeah, we're having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry. I'll start alone again. My name is Robert L. Hodges, Sr. I'm the pastor of St. Paul African Methodist Episcopal Church at 402 West Ederson Street. This may be a loaded question, but I was wondering, with all this development going on downtown, how would this affect the church, St. Paul?
I'm not really sure what you mean by how.
I don't hear anything about, I hear about arts and, arts and culture, but I don't hear anything about the religious organizations and we are right downtown. With all the development that's going on around us, with all of the trucks coming all in down the street, they're shaking our foundation and, and I'm, we're, even in the development, I've only been here two years. I'm not too familiar with the development going on, but I do know that there's a lot of development going on around St. Paul. And like I said in the beginning, this probably is a loaded question and maybe I need to sit down and make a one-on-one, but I was just considering, how are we being affected by the development? Or are we even being considered with the historical preservation? We are the oldest lit congregation in Wake County.
It is a beautiful church.
And so I'm just, like I said at the beginning, it is probably a loaded question. Maybe I need to just sit down and talk one-on-one about it, but...
I guess I'm just trying to figure out what you mean by affected by development.
Well, I think from what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, with everything that's, basically what I'm hearing is with all the growth and development that's taking place, how does any of that impact your church or church's future? And I think that's a question that probably we can definitely, me, our councilman, Crowder, because you're right in her district, can definitely sit down and talk with you. And I think also, I know members of your congregation as well, we could probably have that conversation about the growth, because a lot of it depends on the plans that you all have.
Right.
Because you own your land, you own your parking lot. So I think that's where, you know, by you owning it and what you decide you want to do with it as far as growth, that's when the city will come in based upon our policies on how it would impact you. But if you were to do nothing and sit there, I think the only major impact would probably, no, as far as property taxes, but you're a church.
Right.
So I think there are certain things you're exempt from, but those are some conversations we can definitely have.
All right.
Thanks. Reach out to us, okay?
All right.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing. So it sounds like there's still questions to follow up on downtown. And was your question on area-specific guidance?
Yes.
Okay. How about Historic Preservation and Arts and Culture? You had some questions, Ms. Mandell. I think you got them answered.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve those?
Remove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay. Do you feel like you have a handle on the specific questions? Okay.
Yep. Can we come back to you on the 6th?
Sure.
That'd be during the day, right?
Okay.
Yes, because the public hearing's closed.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
So I do kind of have, so we had a great meeting with staff talking about my question about housing, and I've actually kind of formalized my take on the meeting. I guess I need to get that back to you guys. But then we go through the same kind of a process for the, for the downtown questions?
Yes, I don't want to come back before the 6th because I'd like to be able to have some follow-up conversations with you and Ms. Crowder.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I guess then that's a question to have. Lou, can you make sure that we facilitate that meeting in time?
Yes. I will help him out. We will help schedule the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, next we have comp plan amendment CP 519, Ponderosa Service Road.
This is shorter, I promise.
Okay.
So this is a comprehensive plan amendment that was brought forward by a citizen in anticipation of a rezoning and an annexation case that they have subsequently filed. Those are both, the annexation is pending staff review right now, and the rezoning case you have scheduled for public hearing on December 3rd, so a little ways out. And what they have asked here is a change of the future land use map to set the stage for that rezoning and annexation that would change the designation from Office Research and Development to Moderate Density Residential and Community Mixed Use. It's six parcels totaling 23 and a half acres. The CAC, North CAC voted in favor with a split vote and the Planning Commission recommended approval. So this is the proposal to amend the future land use map. You can see here right now, the parcels in question are all, are both Office Research and Development. And so they're asking for the smaller parcel to the north to be community mixed use to match this area and for the long, narrow parcel to match the moderate density residential that's adjacent here. Does that make sense, folks? And I'm sorry, I should have said to begin with, we're on the west side of Capitol Boulevard, pretty far north. I should have more information to give you better context, I believe. So we're just adjacent to Wakefield here on Capitol. So some zoning in place here and the watershed protection overlay district is in place. The property currently has Wake County Highway District zoning, I believe. And there's a Parkway frontage here on the urban form app for Capitol Boulevard. So here you can see Wake Forest on the east side of Capitol and the property on the west So you see Wakefield Commons, the shopping center to the north. This is adjacent to Common Oaks Drive. And then there's a mobile home park on the south side of the property in question. So overall, this has been found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. There are a couple of inconsistent policies here, the planning for tech sector and preserving industrial land, so you're moving away from those lighter industrial research-type uses, more towards a retail and residential group. And again, the CAC is a split vote here and the Planning Commission recommends approval. And just as a reminder, that zoning case is pending public hearing on December 3rd and the annexation, we believe, would be in front of you on that same date.
Okay. Anyone have any questions before we open the hearing? Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Comprehensive plan amendment CP 519, Ponderosa Service Road.
Good evening. David Brown, Withers Ravanell, I'm representing the applicant for this request. Bynum has done a very thorough job. It's turned into a late meeting. I'll just see if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Okay.
That's easy. Anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, next we have comp plan amendment CP 819, Briar Creek Parkway.
So this is, these next two actually are both city-initiated and really they represent coordination with our partner agencies for planning. So this one is coordinating with our friends in Durham County, Durham City and County to better match our street plans with what they intend to do. So we're redesignating two segments of Briar Creek Parkway in both cases, reducing the planned lane width in one section going down from four lanes to two and then another going down from six lanes to four. And the Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously. So here's the proposed street plan. So you can see you would have in the northern portion of Briar Creek Parkway above TWD Alexander
Alexander, you'd have a two-lane avenue divided and that aligns with two-lane avenue divided plans in Wake County. And then also reducing the lane width in this piece between Alexander and 70 Glenwood Avenue, down from six lanes to four lanes. And just a quick view of what that designation looks like now. So you have the four lane here and the six lane here. So we're making adjustments there. Just a reminder, the four-lane street type typically carries between 15,000 and 35,000 vehicles per day, two lanes in each direction with a median versus the two-lane, which is less than 10,000 vehicles per day, one lane in each direction. So those are, those are the two we're moving toward, right? So that six lane divided, what does that look like? A quick picture of that. So the six lane going down to four and the portion that's four lane going down to two. Zoning here is largely commercial, particularly close to Glenwood Avenue between ACC Boulevard and Glenwood. And then much of the area on the northeast side of ACC is the remainder of the Alexander Place PD. Fair amount of that has been removed from the PD to apply office mixed use zoning in the five to seven story range. And the future land use map here, pretty well matched to the zoning on the ground in terms of vision in relationship to entitlement. Urban form map, this is a growth center and there are, the street plan's still on here, so they're not designations on the urban form map about streets, just that it's a growth center, consistent with the plan overall. And again, the Planning Commission recommended approval, as did, I don't think the CAC voted on this.
Okay.
That's right. I remembered correctly. What questions can I answer for you about this one? Or what questions can I direct to my colleague Eric Lamb about this one?
Any questions before we open the hearing? Okay, thank you. We'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to comprehensive plan amendment CP 819, Briar Creek Parkway? Okay, seeing none, we will close the hearing. Bring it back.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, and then we have comprehensive plan amendment CP 919, DeBois Street.
Again, city initiated. In this instance, we're coordinating with the North Carolina Department of Transportation around their work along I-40. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan overall and the Planning Commission does recommend approval. The West, I believe this is West CAC, heard this but did not vote. And so I want to be clear, we're not removing the street. We're just removing the designation. There was a lot of confusion about that in our conversations with the public. Some people panicked. So a reminder of what those NC DOT plans look like, they're realigning some of the ramps in this area and changing the bridge configuration. So that's what that looks like. Again, so you have DeBois Street here and we're just removing that designation from the map, not removing the street. You can see this DeBois largely runs, so it runs between Western and ultimately connects to the Belt Line, but is running through a residential neighborhood. And it's all zoned residential, which is very much in keeping with our future land use map. And there's no urban form map designation here except for on the Belt Line, which is designated as a Parkway corridor, consistent with vision themes and with the comprehensive plan overall. West CAC did not vote, but your Planning Commission does recommend approval. What questions could Eric or I answer for you?
Okay, done. So we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Comprehensive Plan Amendment CP 919, DeBois Street. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Anything else? Okay, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.